Now being 2 o'clock, I will call the August 5th, 2024 Board of Selectmen Meeting to order. Dan, we all set?
This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The approvals of this meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. So, our first agenda item is a presentation of Housing Production Plan update by the Old Colony Planning Council. And I will say that both Jason and Lisa came to the library about two Saturdays ago to speak on this. So, it was met with much enthusiasm.
So, I have a couple of slides here, just so you can follow along.
Thanks. Thank you. That was me that was on the phone here.
Is there somewhere particular I should stand?
There is good so that they can see you as well from the audience.
And the speaker here will pick you up.
Okay, perfect. So, just to start with a brief introduction, my name is Alyssa Poprentinakis, and this is Jason and Lori, and we are here to discuss the updates to the 2017 Housing Production Plan. So, a brief introduction of who we are. Old Colony Planning Council, or OCPC, is a regional planning agency created in 1967 to improve the physical, social, and economic conditions of the district. We worked with 17 member municipalities in a variety of planning disciplines, including housing. And Plimpton, of course, is one of those municipalities. So, today, we will get started with that Housing Production Plan update. I'd like to start with a brief conversation just about the background of a Housing Production Plan. So, first of all, what is affordable housing? Well, a household is considered cost burdened if they spend more than 30% of their income on housing-related costs, including rent, mortgage, or utilities. Affordable units have long-term restrictions to ensure that they are accessible to households at or below 80% of the area's median income. And this varies based on household size and region, but in Plimpton's region, for a four-person household, this would be about $97,800. Chapter 40B is a state statute enacted in 1969 to encourage communities to increase their affordable inventories. So, if under 10% of the housing stock is affordable, local zoning boards of appeals can approve affordable housing development proposals under flexible rules. So, if a community adds affordable units at an annual rate of 0.5 to 1%, the Massachusetts EOHLC will certify that community for a one- or two-year period. And so, for Plimpton, this would require about five units a year. If certified, the zoning board of appeals can then deny a comprehensive permit for proposals that aren't compliant with local zoning. So, having one helps us to better understand the local needs and demands, guide the type and amount and location of housing, set a numerical goal for production, comply with state law stating that 10% of the housing stock must be affordable. For context, Plimpton's at 4.7%, given the current housing units. It's a little bit higher based on that 2020 census number that the state's reporting right now. It helps us to provide more options and advantages, giving the town increased power regarding new developments. And it helps us to receive higher ranking for grants, including housing choice capital, mass works, complete streets, massed-up capital, and park-in-land, helping to improve the community in a variety of ways beyond housing. So, I'd like to start with a brief discussion of the process we've followed to this point. We began with reviewing and building from the already-approved 2017 version, collected data regarding demographics, housing, and affordability in order to understand the state of the town at this moment. We conducted a public survey, which received 122 respondents, distributed throughout the town, library, and local Facebook pages in order to understand residents' opinions. And, as you said, we've been working on this public outreach, so we had that library session. Thank you for having us. We have today's meeting, and then on Wednesday, we'll be hosting a listening session also here in the townhouse. To begin with some of the data that we were able to find. In terms of demographics, Plimpton's population has grown 11.1% from 2,637 in 2000 to 2,929 in 2020. So, while still a small population, there is a little bit of growth there. 62.9% of households are married, coupled, family households, which helps us to understand the specific type of housing that you need to best support that community. And the average household size going along with that is 2.96. The median resident age increased from 44.4 in 2010 to 45.6 in 2020. And approximately 11.7% of residents have reported disabilities. And again, this might direct the type of housing that you need in order to accommodate those residents. In terms of housing, 96.3% of Plimpton's existing housing units are single-family detached structures. The total number of housing units increased 2.1% between 2010 and 2021. All age groups are more likely to own than to rent their homes in Plimpton. And the median single-family home cost is $465,100, and the median gross rent is $1,396 per month. In terms of affordability, 8.6% of residents currently fall below the federal property level. 22.8% of owner-occupied households, and 45.5% of renter-occupied households are cost-burdened. And 5.18% of Plimpton's housing units are currently included in that state SHI. So, that's based on those 2020 numbers.
5.18?
5.18. Looking at the survey data that we were able to collect, 26.97% of residents are currently dissatisfied with the direction of housing provisions. So, it's important to look at why that might be. The majority of residents support accessory dwelling units, smaller, single-family housing, and accessible housing. And residents expressed the greatest need for housing in Plimpton among first-time homebuyers, young families, and those aged 55 plus. So, looking at all of this data together, we were able to come up with some goals and strategies that will help us to come with the best results out of this plan. And as I go through these, I want you to think of them kind of like a menu of options rather than specific rules. But the goals we have first, to meet and maintain the 10% state standard for affordable housing so that Plimpton is no longer vulnerable to Chapter 40B housing developments. Some strategies to achieve that include developing a comprehensive permit policy, identifying specific sites for which the municipality will advance town goals, and encourage the filing of private comprehensive permit developments. Consider incentives to include accessible and adaptable housing units in new developments, provide affordable options to local veterans, seniors, and individuals with disabilities, and utilizing local initiative programs. Our second goal is to ensure that new affordable housing is harmonious with the community vision of maintaining the rural character and zoning bylaws. So, some strategies to achieve this include considering the adoption of a senior affordable housing overlay district, which will promote affordable housing development for persons aged 55 and over, adopt an inclusionary zoning bylaw, and encourage smaller housing units. Third, we have create affordable housing units through adaptive reuse of existing buildings and town-owned properties. So, our first strategy here is to conduct a screening analysis of town-owned land. Secondly, to study opportunities for reuse of existing buildings or use previously-developed or town-owned sites for new community housing, and explore the adaptation of housing overlay districts to allow affordable senior housing developments on town-owned properties. And our fourth and final goal here is to promote a variety of housing options throughout Plimpton to meet the needs of a changing and aging population. Here, we have encourage mixed-use development to promote a mix of commercial and affordable units near downtown amenities, distribute and diversify new production while ensuring that new housing is harmonious with Plimpton's rural character, encourage local housing initiatives, and continue local planning education to promote achievement of state-mandated affordable housing goals, and review the use of private properties for new housing opportunities. So, I know that the plan has been distributed, so I'd like to kind of open this up with some conversation here. Any comments, questions?
You say 11.7% of the residents have disabilities. How do you define disabilities?
So, that is through the ACS census data. So, there are specific categories.
What's ACS?
ACS is the...
American Community Survey.
American what?
American Community Survey, so the census is done every 10 years. ACS estimates are sort of like chunks or blocks of that 10-year data so that you can forecast or project over like a two- to five-year period within that census block.
And so, some of those categories are self-care difficulties, independent living difficulties, vision difficulties, hearing difficulties.
Okay.
So, thank you very much. It's concise and really got to the point, and I appreciate it. A few questions. The survey had 122 respondents. Is that about average percentage of the population in town?
Like, I think that's higher than we've gotten in previous surveys for Plimpton.
And kind of under...
The population, that's pretty good.
And really, underlying that question is, are we comfortable with the data? The statistics are true, and we can use them to make decisions. Okay. And then, in general, how does Plimpton compare with other towns on the needs and what we have right now?
So, in terms of your needs, they're slightly different just because you're a slightly like smaller town. Like, I just worked on Plymouth's, and obviously Plymouth and Plimpton have very different situations. But what exactly do you mean, how are they different?
I'm really just wondering if anything jumped out. Or I'll put the question a different way. Was there any, did you see anything startling or notable or exceptional compared to other towns?
I think the thing that jumps out the most is your geography and the amount of wetlands you have in the community and the inability of your sewers to handle such systems in all areas. So, that would be really unique to Plimpton. And then, your low population, a small area.
And secondarily, I think something else that jumps out or sticks out is the fact that you have a reasonably high, in consideration of the other communities and then the region, sort of like your SHI inventory is, you know, 5%, which is higher than some of the other towns in this sort of region. But that also is about like town size challenge and all of that. So, you have somewhat of a high inventory percentage within some of the other towns that surround you.
So, I just want to make sure we explain the acronyms. What's SHI?
Subsidized housing inventory. It's a part of 40B, just saying like how close you are to that overall 10%. I do want to provide a quick caveat, though. Affordability and affordable housing is somewhat of a loaded and controversial term. I've worked in affordable housing and housing my entire professional career. I like to think of it as sort of like, the question is like affordable to improve. So, if you're looking at 40B affordable housing, me as a, if I was a household of one, I would qualify for a lot of the 40B subsidized housing inventory, up to 80% AMI. I'm at that 80% threshold now as a household of one. I have a master's degree. And so, it's about like, you know, who qualifies for these housing, depending on by what community. And so, it's not necessarily housing for one specific, you know, population type. It provides housing for a wide variety of working professionals, seniors looking to downsize, families with children, young families.
So, again, AMI, what does that stand for?
Area median income, so...
Because we have people who look at the tape and won't understand some of these.
Area median income, so you take all of the incomes based off of your sort of area, and then it's the median. So, you know, half make about that, half make below that. And so, for a household of one in Plymouth County, it's approximately between $70,000 to $71,000.
Okay. So, one more question for me. When we get our accessory dwelling unit program really built up, will an ADU count toward the 10% of stock? I know that's a technical question, and that may not be where any of you hang out.
So, as you might know, in the state's Housing Bond Bill, one of the pieces of legislation in that was to make ADUs accessory dwelling units by right. That passed. The conference committee has to say it, house went to the governor's desk for signature, I believe, Friday morning. I, you know, one of her key pieces of legislation was ADUs. And so, I'd venture to guess she will be signing it if she hasn't already. I haven't dug deep into the technical language of that specific piece of the Housing Bond Bill. However, for it to comply with 40B and the 10% sort of requirement, it would depend on the income level, how that ADU is sort of constructed, how it's built. I think this is a lot of like detail on that that we don't necessarily have yet. But I know there's a lot of towns that are sort of exploring how to package the 40B piece and the SHI 10% requirement with ADUs to sort of bundle.
And we actually passed an ADU bylaw several years ago. We really haven't taken full advantage of it now. I'm excited that the legislature did that as well. It'll get on people's minds and very much crossing our fingers that that would count toward the 10% threshold. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Nancy Curtin, ADU of Plimpton. I've been just kind of curious. The Woodlands way back when, when it was installed, at that point in time, it was 5% for affordable housing. And also, at that point in time, it was for Plimpton residents and kids. It was not assisted housing. It was strictly 55 and older. It wasn't in what the regab or anything like that. It was strict to that were placed when it was built originally. I'm just wondering, is that 5% included in the 10 to make it 15? Or is it 10, then 5, and then 5 more?
So, the Woodlands are a large chunk of those counted SHI units.
Yep.
So, including those units currently is at 5%.
Okay, so, so your, the new legislation is 10, right?
Yes, that's the current.
So, if we've got 5 already, do we need like, we just should get 5 more?
Yes, you just need 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Which in real numbers equates to approximately 53.
Do you have some comments? Not really. Okay, I got a few questions. So, one of the issues, I think, for this town is we're at about 3,000 people now. Last time I heard a build-out, and it was probably a number of years ago, it was 3,500. And I'm not sure, given the wetlands, et cetera, because every time, every year, the rules and regulations seem to get stricter. So, it's not going to make it easier. It's, in effect, constraining us. So, I have doubts that we can ever reach the 10%.
When Woodlands was built, I'm sorry.
Yep.
When that was built, they tried to tie the water and the septic in this Kingston. Consequently, the Kingston, there were a few eligible Kingston residents that could apply and be, you know, move in.
My understanding is that anybody can go into Woodlands.
Well, it's now totally different. It's, they have suction a, and they have everything under the sun in there and it's a living. There are people, there are people in there now that are not qualified to be assisted living. They should be someplace else.
Near Singapore?
Yes, and also, there's an issue with the health issues that are running a lot back from Woodlands. There's also some infrastructure units themselves that are, need to be upgraded to cope. And all of the general, the fire, there will be people.
That's the first I've heard of this.
It's, I totally can't, I was still really dumb. But I was kind of annoyed way back when it was Department of Housing and Community Development that did all this stuff. They have not changed. They are now a cabinet. And the director is now... But everything has completely changed in the back of my, I'm going to be fond of its mind. And way back when, if you built in a apartment, it used to be moving up $1,800. Now, it's up to $2,400. And if you're thinking of 40B, it depends on what the, what the, if you're going to have a lottery, if what the lottery is saying, okay, we could have built too big. So, that's going to leave a one person out if it's going according to the median income for this area. So, it's, there's a whole different things, you know.
It's her role.
The town property, everything, it's to tie in all these different genotypes, I guess is the best way to put it, because it's not going to be an easy, an easy...
Well, we can ask, I think, the boards that would be affected to look into this.
Oh, absolutely.
As far as I know, there is nobody in Woodlands right now that is a former Plimpton resident.
No, I know. I know that.
And I wish it could be.
And it's wrong because of the turnover.
Well, it's also, it's also federal and state law that if you take federal money...
Certain rules were changed on a state basis, depending on the housing production, housing services, essential, everything was changed. And so, the communities were left literally stunned because they violated everything that the original plan for the Woodlands was in order to increase the finances for whatever department it is up there, or committee, or whatever it is.
Well, I'd like to, you know, I mean, I'd like to look into it before we start casting aspiration because it is a nonprofit.
No, John, be my guest.
Yeah.
And then, just quickly to answer a question that was asked previously, Ed, it was a math, so I didn't have the answer. Rewrite that. But in terms of like survey responses and how representative that is, approximately 4.5% of the population filled out the survey based off of 2020 sort of census data. Best practices generally say for convenience sample surveys, which this was sort of like you put it out there, whoever responds to it responds to it, is around 3 to 5%. So, you're sort of like in the middle of that, towards the upper threshold of that 5%.
Okay.
Which is...
Yeah.
I'm sorry, if you want to, John, social housing is no longer, it was taken over by Neighbor Works. They are the ones that, and they have a property management company that runs the...
The nonprofit is still out of Quincy, though, isn't it? The board of directors, the nonprofit, is still out of Quincy?
Neighbor's House Inclusion.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I had a question.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Where would you say we're at as far as the ADUs and the timeframe? Like, say if we wanted to apply for a technical assistance grant to get your help with maybe looking at what we have in place for our ADU bylaw, maybe along with this Housing Bond Bill, if that language is in fact implemented, and seeing about a way that we could make better use of it? Like, actually get our residents to understand what they might be allowed to do with their property? Because I think there are people here in town who aren't even aware that we have some of these regulations available to assist them if maybe they have a family member who needs to downsize, and maybe they want to come live with them or live in an outbuilding or something on the property. So, I'm wondering if that would be like a worthwhile technical assistance grant application? Or is it kind of too soon for that?
I think we put your application in in December when we send out the...
Okay.
...like in that cycle for a calendar year cycle.
Okay.
And MHP might also have additional funding as well to do more housing or...
So, MHP is...
Mass Housing Partnership.
Okay.
Okay.
She finds a lot of the MBTA Communities Guidelines work in working on things.
Okay.
So, there's a few opportunities.
Great.
I think we're particularly interested in that because we have some CPA dollars that, on an individual basis, are not going to make much impact. But if we needed seed money to work with one of these organizations, I think we're really excited about that. And we're particularly excited in a little town with a fairly strong libertine bent that would just as soon leave government out of it. And I love that these are projects between private citizens making their own decisions along the way. So, you mentioned mass housing, and what other ones again, please?
This is the World Home Technical Assistance, GBLTA. That comes out once a year from our agency, Old Colony Planning Council.
That's what we've applied for, like, multiple years, and we've done well with Old Colony, so thank you for that. Right, this was a technical assistance project, actually.
Good, good.
This update, so...
Any other questions?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Well, this plan won't be able to be submitted to the state until it's adopted by the planning board.
Okay.
Adopted by...
The planning board.
I'll try to reach out to them again. I did not get any response. I know that you were hoping to get before them and onto one of their agendas. I'll try again. They're not affiliated with the selectmen. They're an independent elected board. So, I unfortunately don't have the ability to...
Is there a deadline that we...
It won't be approved by the state until that happens. And then, you get a letter from the town stating that they adopted the plan, and sends the plan with that letter to the state for review. They'll review the contents of the plan, give you feedback and comments. And sometimes we'll have a revision or two. If not, they'll just adopt the plan and prove it on a statewide level. And you'll be eligible for additional points on your grant application.
Great, great.
So, if you're looking for technical assistance or other sort of like support for ADUs or any of this, having an adopted housing production plan is additional points.
Okay. I'll see if I can...
Rattle the cage.
I'll rattle that.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the appointment.
I would go, could you skip ahead, please, to the 2:15 public hearing for EverSource?
I didn't have that on my...
It's right...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Yes, it's right here.
Okay. So, you want to lead us through?
Sure, sure. So, this is the 2:15 PM, it now being after 2:15, public hearing to consider the application of EverSource for pole installation at Main Street and Montello Street. And Bridgette can confirm for us, it was advertised properly in the Plimpton Halifax Express, and notifications went out to everybody, and it was properly posted with the town clerk's office.
Okay. So, we need a motion?
I would make a motion to open the hearing. And then, are you here from EverSource? Okay, so, I mean, it's sort of standard.
Okay.
Standard, but it's nice that somebody's here in case there are any questions. But I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing for the application of EverSource for public installation on Main Street and Montello Street.
Not to get too technical, but I think we need a roll call vote on that.
I would do a roll call vote, yes.
I need a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Trainee, yes?
So, it's...
Speaking in favor?
Yes, Julie Longa from EverSource. And again, we would like to propose install a joint stub pole with anchor and a joint pole along Main Street and Montello Street.
Main Street and Montello. So, that's one pole?
Two.
Two.
There's a stub pole and a regular pole, and it's going to be joint-owned with Horizon.
Okay.
Anyone else speaking in favor?
Anybody against?
Making progress on this. Making progress on this.
So all those in favor?
So let's make a motion to close the public hearing portion first, and then you can deliberate if there are any, and then we'll do a vote.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing deliberation. Roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Trainee, yes. So...
Now, if there are any deliberations, and then if not, um, you could go right to the vote as to whether or not to approve the request.
So I don't have any issue?
Um, no issues. I'm glad to make the recommendation if you want.
Sure, I would appreciate that.
I, I move that we accept the application of EverSource for pole installation at Main Street and Montello Street.
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I do have a question, though.
Sure.
Completely off the subject of what we just discussed. Uh, my understanding is that the utility work in town is now completed, uh, for the, um, transferring the lines for Sola. So we have the old pole and the new pole.
Okay, so you have, uh, two poles?
Yeah, all over town.
Okay.
And that we need Comcast and Verizon to move the wires from the old pole to the new pole, because EverSource through your, uh, your, you could, people you contracted with, that's all done. Can you help us make that transition?
I will speak with the community liaison who handles this area and let them know that, you know, you have joint poles, what they're called, and that we're waiting on Comcast and Verizon to transfer, and then once they do the transfer, then we can remove the secondary pole.
Exactly.
I will have the community liaison, would you want me to have them contact you directly or, um...
Is, is that Anthony?
Yes.
Oh, I know Anthony really well. I'm in touch with him like fairly frequently, so I can reach out to him. So I'm ta, talking to him about joint poles and that we're waiting on Comcast and Verizon...
To tran, so...
To transfer.
We, we set the poles, we transfer our wires, and then Comcast and Verizon needs to transfer their wires before we can take the secondary pole or the old pole down.
Okay.
But, um, yes, if you could, you can, and I'll let you know.
That's great, because the reason I bring this up is that there are streets that it goes back years.
Okay.
So, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Those two, will you pay care or scan?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please sign a little bit.
I never read that.
You don't mind?
I'm sorry?
Can we have one sign now, or do you not want to?
Let's just go through maybe the others.
Okay.
So we're on to the appointment of Deborah Batson to counsel on aging board from August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Glad to see Debbie's there. Review and adoption of code of conduct. Uh, so I, I read through these, and my initial reaction was, we, we need one, and I like what you've given us from the other towns. Um, I like the one from, you know, this is just me speaking, but I like the one that came from whoever this is.
Oh, that was the one that, um, Dana had sent over.
Okay.
The toilet plate.
Yeah.
Did you get the updated one that I sent that kind of merged all the formats?
I guess not, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
So maybe we should hold off until we've...
Well, I mean, the, the premise is the same. I, I merged those two templates that you have there for the form, and that would be affixed to the code of conduct as an attachment. And then the code itself, um, my thought would be that you would maybe approve to it in concept today, and then we would circulate it to the boards and committees, and maybe give them like a timeframe in which to give us some feedback, to see if it's something that, like what they think about it, and then you could vote to adopt it.
Did you, so what I liked was, I liked Duxbury's lead in.
Yep.
But I liked this form, because I think Duxbury then, it was kind of a free-form narrative.
Yeah.
And people, yeah, there's no guidance. That's exactly right. And I like this because...
I can resend you what I had sent out, um...
Yeah, Liz streamlined it quite, quite well and added in.
Okay.
Yeah, I can resend it to you.
Yeah, please. I must have overlooked it.
And then the code itself is very similar to what you have there, to that template, which was originally adopted from the Massachusetts Municipal Association.
By Easton.
Correct. Different towns take the mass municipal version, and then they kind of modify it. Um, when Dana and I first set out on this project, the idea was to give, um, boards and committees in particular, but also department heads, some additional tools that they could use, that if they were encountering a difficult situation, either with a member of the public or an employee, um, something of that nature, it would just be like another tool in the toolkit for them to have something concrete to point to and, um, utilize for documentation purposes. So I think...
Well, I had a few things that I wondered about. Um, first of all, on the page two of the Easton document, it talks about comply as fully as possible procurement laws. I don't know, I don't know the procurement laws. I'm sure most departments...
Right, I think I may have taken that out of the version that I sent out to the board. Um, there were a few things in that one that weren't really applicable...
Right.
To us, depending on...
So maybe I should hold my comments until...
Maybe. Why don't I resend to you, and then you can send me if you have any comments? But I think what we were ideally looking for today, so that the project doesn't...
Right.
Kind of languish, would be a vote of approval of the concept itself, and then I would circulate it to all the boards and committees and give them an opportunity to provide us with feedback. And then we'd come back here with that feedback and hopefully vote to adopt something. And, um, you know, I'm certainly appreciative of this. Um, for those of you here today, just a little background, we had gone over some of our projects and priorities for the upcoming year, and it was something that Dana felt strongly about, and I'm very appreciative of it. He's looking for ways to streamline some of our human resources procedures, and just to have a, a code of conduct in place. It's something we had talked a little bit about like a few years back, um, but it's something that he's really taken the lead on and has been, um, of tremendous help to me in getting something put together and off the ground. And it would hopefully, um, just encourage boards and committees and people dealing with employees or the public to act with more civility and, you know, it's a reminder for people that we're all on the same team, and would give board chairs some additional tools in the toolkit if they are encountering different issues. And it would streamline things a bit for me. So that's how we got here, and we were taking some templates from some different communities, and, um, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, they have a lot of good information about kind of what works in some places and what doesn't. Um, so we were taking from all of that and hopefully can get this in motion, and then it's one thing that we get to check off of our projects and priorities list and move forward.
One of the things I really saw concern with is, is I wanted to see both sides be heard, too, that this is not just somebody on either side of the fence making their complaint, with nobody having any kind of voice on the other side of it. And I wanted to make sure in this process that we have both sides being able to be heard in a proposed solution. Because ultimately, what I'm looking is for unification amongst the whole townhouse effectively, for lack of a better term, where, as Liz quite adequately say, you know, it's, it's a tool. It's a tool. And that's why we want to have it go out to the boards, to the heads of the boards and so forth, so they can look at it and get their eyes on it. Because honestly, you guys have a lot of experience with this, that you had to deal with different situations over the years. I want to hear what you guys could say. You could look at this and say, okay, you know, maybe we should have this added to it. There should be a codicil to it. There's some other kind of an amendment to it, or maybe we should do this, or hey, this is really good because you're getting both sides a say. I did not want to see it as a one-way street that just, it's complaints only, that's what it is. No, I want to have the person who is being complained about, lack of a better term, they have their say, too. Okay? But also not in a back and forth, that there's a formal process to say, okay, hey, if you're stepping up and you want to make a complaint, you're not making some kind of a remark off the record, or some kind of a note passed, or something on social media, or anything like that. If it's that serious, you're gonna sign your name to it, and you're gonna make that statement. And at the same time, the person who is actually being aggrieved, part of party, so to speak, the one causing the issue, quote unquote, can speak their mind, too. Hey, this is my side of the story. This is what happened. And then it's actually documented. So it's kind of what we're looking for with this, to make it a more streamlined process. And like John just pointed out, when you look at those forms, they give you guidance. Okay, well, what happened? When, when did this happen? What are the things like that? So it's not just like this whole thing, it was a dark and stormy night, it was raining, you know, it's, this is gonna streamline it down to what it is, and to the facts of that. But also, at the same time, not stifle somebody. They have their opinion on both sides, and they both need to be heard, period. And I want this to be that, that way, that it's, it's designed that way. So...
I think it's well needed. I, I think what a lot of people don't understand is when they send us an email saying, I want to keep this private, it's already public. And that, that's not something that we do. It's open meeting law. So this at least gives us a way of controlling that conversation, and I think it's gonna help everybody. Um, that's great. So...
And I'm glad that we're sharing it. I think, I, the feedback will be important. We may be missing things in this, and we get to polish it a little, but the other half of it is buy-in. And, you know, if we just make a decision willy-nilly and say, this is it, we won't have buy-in. So I hope what comes out of this experience is in sharing is just that, more feedback and especially more buy-in.
So...
Okay.
We, we need a motion, right?
If you could, just to approve it in concept.
So can you repeat the motion?
So if you could make a motion to approve the concept and the initial draft of the code of conduct for boards and committees and the associated, um, complaint form, with the understanding that we will be sending it out for feedback and edits before you vote to adopt a final version.
So I'll make the motions as moved as...
So moved.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Great.
So who was the second on that?
Dana was the second.
The second. John made the motion.
Okay.
Actually, Liz made the motion.
True.
But there, a lot of Beth goes...
Can officially make the motion.
She spoke the motion.
Um, state primary warrant is on here. Um, what are we looking at there?
That's from Tara, um, and she has the document here for you to sign. She's required to post the, um, state primary warrant, have it posted by the constable, and go through her proper procedure for the election. So she just needs you to take a vote, um, to authorize that posting, and then you'll be signing it.
Too many damn papers.
And then she also included for your, um, reference, a list of the upcoming elections and the associated dates.
So we need to take a motion down through, just list all the people on here, or how...
Um, you can, so I would suggest approving the state primary warrant for posting by the town clerk. Um, and I would just say, and the acknowledgement of the associated list that she provided, and we can attach that.
So that was something separate?
That's more for your knowledge.
For knowledge.
Oh, okay.
This is the...
That's the state primary warrant that you have to actually sign, and then she's gotta have the constable come and do that.
Okay, so...
So she has to have it posted by...
By a certain date.
August twenty-seventh, okay. So I'm gonna just, again, make the motion as you elaborated it.
Second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Because I can't remember. It would help if these were written out ahead of time, the motion you want.
Oh, okay.
So that I know what I'm speaking...
Do you want to sign it? Well, we're all here, so...
Yeah, and there's also something, I think, for EverSource that you need to sign, and, um, Debbie's appointment slip.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We have warrants, Bree?
Yes, two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven.
And so...
Because we paid, um, on a duct spray for the rock.
How much was that?
The regional dispatch.
Two hundred thousand?
Thirty-one, five hundred fifty-seven.
Two hundred thousand went to the regional dispatch for the contract for this fiscal year.
Okay. And two thirty-one was the total?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Okay. And next, I'm sorry, yeah. We have one for EverSource, is...
Yeah, she's gonna pass that down.
So that'd be assigned on the air.
Okay. And Liz, you gonna do your updates? I know you've been on vacation, but...
Um, so the first update is that Selectmen Dana Smith has graciously donated a PA system to us. So once we get that up and running from Area Fifty-Eight, once we have their help getting it connected, um, our people in the audience should hopefully be able to hear hu, hear us, and we should be able to hear them. So we're working with Rich Gulart from Area Fifty-Eight to get that set up.
Great.
Um, so just, big thank you to Dana for setting us up with that system.
Uh, yeah, us with old ears, we're really, really appreciative.
Seems like almost every meeting, we were being chastised a little bit for not being able to hear us.
So Black first.
Sure, Nancy.
Um, regarding Area Fifty-Eight, is there any way that the people in attending the select board meetings can be seen?
So they should, so they should be able to, um, almost like toggle around to the different cameras. So if, if you were talking, um, I believe that the person operating the system in the back can select which camera feed. Um, but I think with the new PA system, once they help us set that up, we'd probably be well-served to get some sort of a table back up here at the front with a microphone set up, so that anyone using this meeting room, if they have people coming to speak to the board, and that would help, too, so that, like, we could hear the people in the audience if they're speaking.
Well, that's it, wouldn't that be neat?
Yeah, it's exciting. And, um, so great donation from that. And otherwise, we've moved forward from closing out last fiscal year, and now the accountant is shifting gears, and we'll be working with her on hopefully getting our free cash certified, and the audit from the prior fiscal year should be getting going probably sometime in September. Um, typically, that's what we aim for, to get them started.
Good.
And we also had received word that, um, Eric and Katrina Player in correspondence, they resigned from the Recreation Commission.
Yeah.
So there are two vacancies now on that commission.
Was...
Do we have any ideas yet for that?
Not yet.
I can speak a little bit to that. I was gonna do it in Battle of the Raves.
Okay.
Was there any correspondence?
That was the only correspondence, their resignation.
So minutes. Everybody get a chance to read the minutes? I thought they were good.
Yep, I'm good.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of...
July twenty-second.
July twenty-second as written.
A second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bree. And I think, when's our next meeting?
August nineteenth at two PM.
August nineteenth, okay.
I won't be here. Who's gonna take the minutes?
The clerk.
Will help.
Okay.
So, uh, next meeting is August nineteenth.
Two PM.
Two PM. And, uh...
Now it's just on to your raves.
Yeah. I do like these two PM meetings, but we'll talk about that at the next meeting.
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback, um, not just from Towns... I've got a lot of positive feedback, um, not just from town staff or from seniors, but also say for the Old Colony Planning Council folks that were here. That would have cut into our technical assistance grant money if they had to come out in the evening. There is a monetary value associated with that.
Yep.
And if they have to pay their people overtime to come at night. Also, on August 19th, I have a loose commitment from town council to come into executive session with us and to go over just any ongoing litigation to give the board an update now that we have a new member. And that's saving us a lot of money with that ability. You know, I just, I feel like it appeals to a lot of different scenarios for different people's lifestyles.
I know we were going to discuss it in September by going back to a 5 o'clock meeting, but I would like to see us put it on the agenda for the next meeting at 2 o'clock to continue the pilot through December.
That would be great. That would be fantastic.
So if you put it on the agenda, we'll take it up.
I'll put it on the agenda, though, so that it's a formal discussion and everything.
So raves. I was going to give a rave. We had the Recreation Committee come to the library Saturday. Uh, this is Angelo Bacalini and Mark Riley. And it's just amazing the work they've been doing. They have, they went through it step by step, the project, the pieces of it. It's just been a great experience to see this, them taking it on and doing it. Katrina and Eric Player were two of the five-member board, and due to outside commitments, having kids, they had to step down from the board. So both Eric and Angelo made a, a strong plea. I think what they're looking for is one person who might have construction type expertise and another person who had project management. But they were reaching out to their, their audience, and, uh, they're doing a fundraising. I think they sent out 139 letters. They sent to, uh, different, um, people in the area. They've also reached out to all the businesses that touch within Plymouth County. So it's really great to see an active community. And, and one of the outlook comes of that is going to be a walking trail around the whole field that will be suitable for disabled and senior people. So very exciting work, and I commend them on all the work they've done. Mike, what's your...
So my rave is some progress. Um, the OCP presentation on housing, another step, and beginning to move forward on that. Velocally slow, but progress. Equally progress on our, um, code of contact, conduct. We tried that several years ago, ran into some friction, and I'm really glad we're in agreement and pushing to move forward. And actually, the one I'm really excited about is the, uh, town council coming into the next meeting, updating us on ongoing litigation, so we're all on the same page. And I, I think that's one way to be on top of that, and our, our town council budget has kind of grown and grown, and if there's any way we can consolidate and shrink that down a little bit, that's good. Kind of tied in that with that is the 2:00 PM thing. I think there's a lot of enthusiasm in this room, and, um, we'll talk more about that next week. Look at everyone's smile on that one. Biggest smile of the day.
So thank you for, uh, pushing that 2 o'clock forward. I think it's, uh, I think it's going to be great. So, unless somebody has, y'all said?
Oh, I wanted, just one quick rave before we go. I had been discussing with my community liaison contact from Eversource, the gentleman who I'm going to check about the joint poles, yes. I was telling him about our National Night Out event, and I was thinking more along the lines of Eversource maybe setting up a pop-up tent and integrating with the community. Well, no one was available for that. He did point me in the direction of a grant opportunity. It needed to be applied for by a nonprofit, so I partnered with the Firefighters Association, actually. They are a registered nonprofit, and Eversource is going to be donating $2,000 to us for that event. So that'll be nice. Um, they think that the check might be ready in about six weeks or so. So when we have that check presentation, um, I'll make sure that we have people from the Firefighters Association there, and I'll let everybody know. But I thought that was a sizable donation for a town of our size and our little community event, so good news.
Thank you to Eversource. Thank you to you, making that happen. Bree, do you have any rave you want to make?
I love you all.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion that, uh, we close the meeting, open meeting.
A second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cool.
Great job.
All right.
Yahoo.